The maintenance.
Yeah.
You know.
Doug Brown.
Hang on.
Please, we'll do roll call first, Countess. Thank you.
Commissioner Beer. Chair Kit.
Here.
Commissioner Dressler.
Eric.
Commissioner Basco.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under common indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a motion to excuse for excused absences for Michael Wright and Bob Brown.
So moved.
Second.
Also.
All those. In unanimous, great. Okay, ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda with the idea of moving the presentations down after the cannabis update. I have a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
It's so frustrating.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest with the items on the agenda tonight? No? We'll move on to correspondence. Introductions, we have Councilmember Joanne Frank in the chambers and past Councilman Sean Goodnison. Thanks for attending. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we had asked that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Okay, so we'll start with a 10-minute presentation has been established per municipal code section two dash 18.
We're going to move that to the very end, Madam Chair. But we didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going down to public appearance.
Yes.
Persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the chair, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash 18. Amendments to the California Government Code, section 54950 prohibits the commissioners from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. So the first item is to approve the minutes of the October 4th meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? If not, I would ask for an approval.
I want you to approve the minutes.
Second?
A second.
Second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And then we'll move to the cannabis update.
Yes. Chairman, members of the commission, we're going to pull up the PowerPoint three.
We share it here, I'm sorry.
Right, so Brittany, we've got a presentation that we're providing to the multiple of commissioners and boards. It's important, you know, as a city that has revolved around cannabis for a revenue source, it's important to provide an update of where it's gone and where it's been and all that. The Planning Commission itself has played a monumental role in getting most, all these projects up and running. Because basically, an initial use permit is required and the initial use permit has a planning commission approval and city council approval. So you, this board has played a monumental role in getting these, the projects permitted and up and running, so to speak. So in Brittany, it's important that we should provide you with a little bit of an update. In 1996, California recognized cannabis medical marijuana as a opportunity for, is that better? All right, for through physician recommendations, you were allowed to utilize marijuana as a, as a medical, it's not an ointment, but as medicine, to be able to make yourself better for whatever, whatever medical conditions that you had available or that you had occurred. So in 2012, Measure S was approved by the residents of this community overwhelmingly. Because basically, they believe that, fine, if you're going to allow these retailers, because at the time, 2011, 2010, there were just retailers that were allowed through the state. And so the city had five of them. And at that point in time, the city said, fine, if you're going to exist, we want to pass a tax. And that tax equates to 10% of gross receipts on these cannabis revenues. And so there's been evolution at the state level and also at the city level. In 2015, the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act allowed for the licensing of distribution, manufacturing, testing, cultivation, and retail, which was already allowed, but you were able to actually do the entitlements of that process. Go ahead. You exit out, just an exit. There you go, do the T, there you go, just submit. Go. Right? So with, with this, with the state making evolutions or evolving, the city follows suit. And so with ordinance 574 AC, that allowed for the, that led to the creation of section 12A of the Needles Municipal Code, which allowed us to regulate the cannabis industry for manufacturing, distribution, cultivation, distribution. And so that, so we evolved with the state. And then Proposition 64 occurred in 2016. It's adult use or recreational use, however you want to state it, but the state allowed for the recreational use, which did, which was different than medical. Medical, you needed actual prescription. In this case, you could go to a facility that allowed the sale of recreational, and there was a distinction at the time. And the council, at that point in time, decided to evolve and also allow for recreational cannabis to be sold in our facilities. Because there was a presentation that was done, as you recall, by one of the growers, and they had two plants in front of them, and they said, he turned around, moved the plants, and came back and said, what's the difference? And so there was a little bit of that going on. So the council recognized that they needed to be progressive and also allow for recreational marijuana to occur. And with the passage of 606 AC in 2018, there was that evolution that took place. Then, two years later, in 2020, with the passage of Ordin 629, the city took a step that very few cities had taken at the time, and that was allowing lounges, the consumption lounges to take place. And so the state hadn't regulated, but the city decided to take that step and allow it. Currently, the city does have one lounge that's up and running, and there's another one that's permitted. Actually, two that are permitted, that are coming online. You've got the 2701, and then you've got the one at 1400 K Street. And then you've got the operational one, which is at, it's next to the Uncle Bud's Eatery. And so, and then in 2022, we went ahead and streamlined the application requirements for grounds of lease of denial, the live scans that take place. We, so some of the requirements that we are, the denials that we were, we had on our books were opposing with the state law allowed. So we just followed suit and mirrored the state law. So since 2017, 93 entitlements have been issued by the City of Needles. And so that is basically 277,000 are operational today. That equates to 34 businesses. So one consumption lounge that's operating, remanufacturing, seven retail, five distribution, and 18 cultivation facilities. And so the city is not only leveraged the advantages of the tax revenues for the economic growth, but we've also improved our city's infrastructure. I'll get into that in a moment, but here's all the different facilities that are up and running as of today in the City of Needles. And it's a simple economic development model. Create a business-friendly environment which attracts businesses, creates jobs. People need housing, increase the population, and brings developers and retail to follow. And so the increase in jobs that has been a direct result of this industry that's been created has led to almost 600 new active jobs in our community. Now, the issue I have is that 340 of those folks live in Arizona and only 118 live in Needles. But we're working on that. That's a housing problem that we're actively working on, and we, you know, we have a pro-housing designation, but that's a different conversation that we can have at a later date. But we're actively, we had 1,400 jobs to start with. We've added almost 600 new jobs. So this is huge, and it's had a positive impact in our, our community. It's led to the, our economy, have the rapid recovery in the City of Needles. This is a 2018 article. We won a economic development award at the state level for our game changer economic development strategy in involving the green cannabis economic development effort. So we were recognized at the state level. And so, but you want to look at hard numbers, you look at, since 2017, the total property value for the city has gone up 72%. That's 225 million. That's a big number. And then this last year, it's gone up 45 million. And so when you look at your property tax bills and you say, why has my property tax gone up? It's because the value of the city has actually increased. And that's with these million-dollar homes being built. That's with these new businesses that are being developed. That's with these homes being remodeled. A lot of the existing vacant properties that existed in our community have been bought and remodeled and refurbished to it, so that these folks can, and people that want to move to Needles are able to live in it. And so what it's meant for the city is since 2012, the passage of the tax, it's in $18 million in tax revenues for our community. And it's gone into our street systems, it's gone into our, you know, paying for law enforcement, it's gone into paying for our legal fees, it's gone in paying for our code enforcement officers. And so that money has gone back directly to help support our, the industry with the growth that we're actively seeing. And so this last year, you're seeing that we brought in 4.2, down from 4.8. The year before that, we got 4.5. And so there has been a competitive market these last, this last year, where the price of cannabis has dipped from 1,600 down to 800, up to 1,100. And so cannabis, the cannabis industry have seen that by volume, by producing volume, has been a method for these folks to succeed. We actually haven't had any businesses shut down in the City of Needles in terms of, you know, seeing an economic development squeeze and being, being hit economically. So we haven't seen them shut down. But throughout the state, there was something like 100 licenses that weren't renewed because of the saturation that occurred. Here's us on the front page of the New York Times in 2018. And with the economic development strategy, there's, there's been this additional jobs that have been created and a need for restaurants and hotels and for all these extra, these additional multiplier effect from the cannabis industry. So when the folks came to town and they needed a place to stay for their construction workers, that immediately raised the rate at the Best Western from $90 to $140 to $150 depending on the night. And so with that, our, the hoteler in town saw that increase and said, you know what, we can very, we can capitalize on this. And so you're seeing that the cannabis industry has enhanced our community by stimulating employment opportunities, but also not only that, but business growth. And when the folks first came to town, they, they took over a lot of the existing storage facilities. A 3515 Needles Highway, that was a storage facility that's now a cultivation, and so that was taken over. A lot of the other storage facilities were also entitled for cannabis, and they're currently entitled for cannabis. But Needles Marina saw a opportunity by creating, filling a void, but not only that, they utilized the Economic Development Grant, which is, comes from the cannabis revenues. That 4.2 number you saw earlier, we, we set aside 10% of that and put it towards non-cannabis businesses within our community. And so the Hampton was another benefactor of that economic development grant. They utilized, of the $12 million project, they utilized about $100,000 of the revenues for the cannabis economic development grant to put towards the project. Yes, those aren't big numbers, but, but it does provide an incentive for folks that do want to build in our community. Another one we're seeing here is the filter change, you know, like I like to tell folks, we don't have a Starbucks, but you can get your Lube and Vate at the same place. And so basically, these folks were able to utilize $12,000 for our, from the Economic Development Grant that the council provides. And then additionally, we've been able to improve our streets. So the progress has been slow, but we've, we've in totality, put roughly $8 million worth of monies, these cannabis dollars, towards the improvement of our streets and the improvement of our infrastructure. And so here's another example, at the beginning of this, the MP UA actually benefited significantly. The Needles Public Utility Authority was able to leverage the fees that were charged for the use of the electricity orbit, its impact fee, if you want to call it, towards rebuilding our infrastructure. To the left, you're going to see the Merrill Shaver Station, which costs about 1.2 million. On the right, you're going to see the other Bilyoni substation that costs about 1.2 million. So these weren't taxpayer, well, they weren't ratepayers. Well, let me step back, because the cannabis were paid. So these weren't, these were all funded by the cannabis industry. How about that? Let's go, let's go that route. And so the cannabis folks paid for this infrastructure. There were, there were days at a time where the power would go off, and that doesn't happen anymore. And so the power would go off for a couple of days in a row, and you just didn't, the utility would get to it as fast as we could. But now, with the improvement in system reliability, changes that have been made as directly from the cannabis industry revenue dollars for this impact fee has really benefited our community. We've also improved our system liability by creating upgrades with this intertie. This is a $1 million intertie that starts from the north and comes down to, from the Yoni all the way down to Spikes Road. Basically creates system reliability for our system. And so again, this is a direct result of the cannabis impact fee for our community. Here's just a picture of one of the facilities. But, you know, with, with the large industry that's occurring today, of the 34 businesses, we have run into a couple of problems with about four of them. And so of those four, four of them had to utilize the long-term payment plan that the MP UA provides with its terms and conditions. And one of the larger of those folks, the MIH entities, had passed the utilities and taxes. And so we entered into a payment plan with these folks to, you know, get those, get those monies back. And, you know, they're currently current in the final payments due June 2024. And so this code enforcement effort, I guess is what I'm trying to get at, is that with this robust code enforcement program that we have, we truly believe in compliance. And that, and some of the major issues, so to speak, that we get are odors, are violations that encompass tax inequity, and then absence of active state licenses and non-compliant signage. And so over the last five years, we've issued about 186 citations for these types of, you know, code enforcement issues that we are actively trying to taboosh. Because when they sign that conditional use permit, they, they sign off that they will not create odors, that they will pay their taxes, they will have current record keeping that, so they can do their audits and all these different things. And so we have a aggressive enforcement team that goes after these folks, excuse me, that, that works closely with these business owners to ensure that they comply. And so again, they are business owners and a community, so we do appreciate them greatly, but they need to live up to the terms and conditions that they have in front of them. You know, and so here's another facility up there on Victory. Our building official was out there last week because there were some odor complaints that we received. And so we found, it came to our attention that the odor mitigation system was not looked at. And so at that point in time, when the system's looked up, of course, they're not going to be providing odor.
Are you talking about my complaint?
One of, yes.
Mine was not odor, mine was noise.
No, 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 this is a general, they have gotten odor.
A lot of people complained to me about odor. I can't smell any of it.
Okay, so, so this is one that we, we've gotten recently. And, and so we've, again, we cite them, we cite them, and we ensure we go to their site. So no pun intended, but we do go to their facility to ensure that what, what is going on? Sometimes it's just rolling up the roll-up doors, sometimes it's changing their filters, sometimes it's an easy fix. Or sometimes it's they haven't looked up their odor mitigation system. And so that's, that's, that's an issue that we have. And so we actively pursue those. Here's another example of one that is cultivation, and then just recently added retail, and they will also be a lounge at the site. And so the City of Needles continues to aggressively pursue our enforcement plan, but at the same time, work with these folks to ensure they comply in general. And so furthermore, the city is actually, I've put on a bulletproof vest roughly five times and got into one of these multiple facilities, and we've shut down nine of them to date. And so luckily, we work closely with the, with the Sheriff's Department, so we don't have to do that anymore. But in the beginning, this was a civil matter, and this wasn't a criminal matter. And so the Sheriff's Department, just in recent years, has made it a criminal matter because these folks are, you know, it's an illicit operation that we aggressively need to mitigate, and we do not allow in our community. And so with that, you've got a lot of information in here, but it's important that we all know where we're at, where we've been, where we're going, you know, through this annually, so we're on the same page. We, we understand, you know, we are looking for alternative economic revenues to find alternatives. But at this point in time, you know, economic development 101, you want to, you want to retain the businesses that you do have so that you can expand and find those other big fish that we're looking, and with the, you know, lower energy costs and, you know, those kind of opportunities, we are actively pursuing other revenue sources. But at this point in time, the state of, the city is, you know, in a better place because of the cannabis industry. So with that, I am open to any questions that you might have.
I have a question. You mentioned that there was a 10% set aside from the cannabis tax for new businesses for economic development? Thought that was a 1%.
It's, it's a rounding error. It depends on how you look at it. So it's, it's either 1% of the whole or 10% of the, the 10% of the, so it's 1% of the 10% or 10% of the whole. So it just depends on how you do the math. But yeah, it's, it's roughly 1.4 million right now. And so we are, the council, those applications do go to council. There are regulations for them. They have to create two or more jobs in the community. They have to be in the City of Needles. And then we roughly can only do about 2%. It, it depends, materials, you can do half, but when it comes to development, you can only do 2%, otherwise it triggers prevailing wage, state law that basically drives up the cost of the project about 30%. You decide to develop something utilizing these funds. So really, they're, they're to help billing permits. They're to help, because you have to have, you have to have a C of O. So, so it's anything beyond planning. So you've got, you've got to have the entitlement, and then once you get the C of O, we can pay you out. But it's, you know, it's a great, it's a great tool that, you know, one of the council, one of the formal council members here actually helped assist get this up and running. And so it has helped numerous businesses in our community. But it's, it's to fill a gap. It's not to keep you afloat, but it's to help gap-finder, you know, get you off your feet, so to speak. So that's, that's where we're at, that.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just don't want to forget that our streets are probably the most important thing for every single taxpayer in town. So don't lose any money that's going to the streets.
Absolutely. And so we just had to, real quick, we had to kick back the bid, because it was, it was, first, it was, first, the bid was, someone had fought the bid, but at the same time, we, we didn't feel comfortable with the last street bid. And so the next set of streets, we're looking at in January or February, starting those up again. And so we're going to put another $2 million plus towards the, the street improvements, so we can continue that on. We also got $8,000 from Olgrin Ulti to finish up the streets over by the school district off of Washington. We did the main streets, but now we're going to do all the collector streets there. So that's going to be on the agenda. We're going to go back out the bid, either later this month, early next month, to get that moving forward again. Because that is a priority of the city council to ensure that we're putting those monies towards our hardware. One of the counselors said, we don't want to wake up one day, one of the former counselors that addressed us, so, said, we don't want to wake up one day and try and figure out where all that money went, right? We want to be able to look around. So there is a 15-year pavement management plan that the city council has adopted. We are looking at refreshing that to ensure that, you know, it's been a while. We have learned a couple of things since we've started in 2018. And so we, we are doing a refresher over it to ensure that we were on the right path. But the goal at that point in time of that report was to ensure that we're doing all the good streets first, and then we were rebuilding all the old streets. You want to maintain the good and then go after and chip away at the bad. And so that's, that's that pavement management program, so.
Any other questions?
I have a question. These revenues, are they generated off, were they generated off the square footage originally? I understand, it's only 10% off of the square footage.
So, Madam Chair, so basically, the city council, two years ago, hunted this per-square-foot tax, so to speak. We tried to get it off and running, and we just didn't have enough time. We are going to look back at that option. Basically, what that would do is, if you take the building square footage, you would do it just a generic per-square-foot number. Last time we did that analysis, it wasn't, it wasn't clear enough, because some people were paying $2.50 per foot, and other folks were paying $55 per foot. So now that we brought on an auditor that is in the cannabis industry and understands the cannabis industry, we'll bring them back into the fold. So we will be bringing that forward to the city council. So it's no answer to your question.
That's what I was getting at. I know we talked about a consultant or somebody that was going to check in too.
So, so my goal is to get it on, in front of the city council before, coming up in June, to ensure, we want to have all our ducks in a row before we do that, to ensure that we've got it. You know, we have to have community meetings, and obviously, the cannabis industry might oppose it. And so it might be a thing, but what we'll do is we'll retain the old tax, the 10%, and then add this as a layer. So that way, we fall, so that way, it's not removing one advantage or the other. That way, if it doesn't pass, we can just fall back on the 10% gross receipts. Because yes, it is easier to do the calculation, but they've got, it's got its own challenges. Because say, it's $50 per square foot, and the cost of cannabis goes down, do they get a discount because that cannabis price went down? And, you know, and the answer is, I don't have that answer. So we need to develop, we need to develop an ordinance that at least gets us to where we need to go, because our current ordinance is great, they did a great job. But again, it was adopted back in 2016. So it's, it's, the tax ordinance actually is even older than that, 2011, when it went to the voters for Measure S. So we need to go ahead and take a look at that and see, a lot has changed since 2012. And so we just need to make sure our ordinance is up and stuff. And so at the very least, I'd like to get some of that language adopted that's in our updated ordinance that didn't get approved last time, because that will close some of the loops that were, with the issues that we're having.
Will, did you have a question?
I do have a question. You know, I think you mentioned that the city's trying to look at alternative, alternative industries instead of only cannabis, which right now, you know, that's fine. But, and you mentioned that our energy costs, they're lower than most because we've got the municipal utility that gets power from Davis Dam, is that correct?
We buy directly from the federal government, right?
So, how, how does that rate compare to folks across the river in Fort Mojave and Bullhead? Are they getting the same deal that we are? Are they more expensive?
It's, it's about the same, it's about the same. But when you're looking at those folks, and also Gundo, that are doing mole injection, plastic mold injection for their, for their companies, they're at 32 cents to 35 cents. So we're not competing against them, we're, we're competing against other folks. And so it's not so much us versus Mojave County or Bullhead or anything like that, because you've got you've got rules that don't apply in, in, uh, in, uh, Arizona or Nevada that apply in California, like Sequoia and like sprinklers and solar and like, I don't want to go down there. We're not, I don't want to have that conversation. Cause that's, that's a, that's a debate in itself. But we want to compete against other, uh, you know, uh, Southern California businesses that want to move out. With COVID, there's a lot of folks that are attorneys that are moving out of Southern California. You know, we've got an attorney we met that, uh, he, uh, he works, he lives on, uh, on the river, lives on the riverfront property. And so he appreciates that view as opposed to his, his office in Menifee. And so he practices, so he works out of this office. And I know that's, that's a small, we're not, we're not talking big like plastic, plastic mold injection or something to that nature. But that's who we want to go after. And the council just adopted a four-pronged marketing effect. Uh, we're going through, uh, identifying our, our marketing individual now who's going to do that. But basically it's, uh, retail mani- manufacturing, so those high-energy users, hospitality, because obviously we've got a lot of opportunity for hospitality and then housing, we need housing. And so those are the four industries that the city is actually actively going to start marketing to those different folks. So we'll go to the plastic mold injection, uh, convention or, or the things of that nature. So we need to, we need to market ourselves to high-energy users.
Well, yeah, that, that was kind of what I was getting after. That, that's one thing we can offer is that the electricity, for instance, is lower. Now what about water?
So we've got enough water. We've got entitlements that, uh, we use about, so we get about 15 uh, hundred, uh, 15,000 or 1500 acre feet a year is what we use. We use about 1100. So we're actually below our allocation this year. We just met with BOR a couple of weeks ago. And so we're actually under utilizing our water allocation. And so we've got room for water. We've got it, um, our, our sewer system, our wastewater treatment plant, we use about a quarter of that. It's 1.5 million gallon sewer, uh, system that we is underutilized. So we got water, we got power. And we've got a city that's able and willing to issue permits and get people through the process.
Right. So also the, the power, let's say we start enticing more industry out here because of the lower utility rates, which are off the charts in Southern California. High water, high power. It's crazy. So I wonder, do we have the capability with all the electrical that's in place to supply enough electricity if industry came in? Or would it have to be increased to meet the demand? Or how does that work?
Yeah. So in certain areas of the city, we're going to need it improved. Like if you look over by, uh, so on the east end, we're going to need to put a substation in there to be able to increase our, uh, to do system reliability, but also to provide more power in that area. Over by, by the, uh, the gates area and, and whatnot. And so it's Spike Safari, Spike Road, Victory, all those different areas, we'd have to put a substation in there. But what happened from directly is a result of the cannabis industry. We went from 30 megawatts to 60 megawatts. And so what that allowed us to do was provide the city with an opportunity to grow and expand uh, based on us improving our system so that we could expand. So before cannabis, no, we couldn't, we had limited opportunity for expansion. After cannabis, we've improved, we've created a system or we've improved our system to increase the power that we purchased our allotment from 30 megawatts to 60. And say we got to 60, we needed more power, we'd go to WAPA and get more power. So it's ba- it's based on our, our usage. We have to actually show that we're using that 60 megawatts and we're not. We're, we're about 23, 24 during the summer, 25 at the, at the max. And so we want to go beyond 30 megawatts. Cause we basically get it through, uh, no name, uh, uh, and then it comes into the city. So the, if we want to go beyond 30 megawatts, we'd have to look at a different, um, source of power to come from the south and bring it up, uh, through, uh, Pirates Cove area. So we'd have to find a different way to expand our, our system. We wanted to get beyond 30. But at this point in time, we use 23, 24. And so we're able to in- increase and expand our system based on what we're sitting today. And we can even, we can even expand it even more based on the allotment that we have with WAPA.
And that was a big, that was one of the big benefits with the marijuana because they helped us pay for those expansions out to their facilities.
If we could get some of these.
Then they're like Walmart or Amazon because they're right along the I-40 here. You know, to go all the way back east or whatnot, that could, that'd be awesome, you know, with all the jobs and.
So, I, that brings up a good point. So California is putting a bunch of regulations on freight and the way that freight's being transported and, you know, big wheelers, how far they can go and all these different things. And so city, uh, city of Needles is actually really, they were in front of the curve when it talked about an inland port, so to speak. And so that's when a train brings in the freight or a truck brings in the freight, um, um, sent it, uh, from the, uh, Long Beach port. And so it brings it in, puts it on a train and then sends it out. So they actually did that in Barstow just recently. And so with all the sequel litigation that's taking place for, because they're trying to stop the, the, that in the inland empire. That's where a lot of that growth occurred with all those warehouses, million square foot of.
Oh, yeah. I go there a lot. It's a hell. There's, there's way too many. They're running out of room. We've got all this room here.
Be mindful of how we expand. Like we were mindful with the cannabis industry. But at this point in time, if they were coming out this way, I mean, that'd be, that'd be a benefit. And so.
We're perfect for it.
So I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a two-year thing or a one-year thing, but I am saying it's within the next five, 10 years that they're going to be expanding this way. Because they're not going to be allowed in the inland empire anymore.
Right.
And, and not only that, they're not going to be able to drive their trucks. So if you come in from Arizona and you're not driverless or you're not electric or something like that, you're going to have to just drop it off here and then send it off. Right? And so there's an opportunity there. And now, now working closely with San Bernadino County Transit Authority. And should we showed them our proposal? That was David, the 2000, you worked on it.
Yeah, Sean, that we. It was, I guess it was just not the right timing for that. But I mean, that's, we're perfect.
It was ahead of the curve.
And so the railroad right now is in the process of building a big, huge uh, intermodal yard in Barstow. So it's just a matter of time.
Yeah, that's right.
Be here.
Amen. And they took our idea, by the way.
Yeah.
Throw it out anyone.
Yeah, right. So I. We're, it was just ahead of its time. But when we, uh, what's funny is we met with the head of S E C T A, Rick and I about two years ago, we gave him the proposal. He said, this is great. About three or four months later, S E C T A is partnering up with, and it's like, come on.
Never trust the government.
Yeah, Rich just about died.
We're here to help.
No, but you're right. You're right. These are, there's opportunities for those kinds of growth and, and we're all, we're open to it. I mean, uh, well, I can only speak for myself, but, but we, I've got direction from the council to help expand. We are a pro-growth community at this point in time. And so I will encourage, uh, opportunities for growth within our community.
Any other questions, Will? Okay, Barbara?
You may have alluded to it. I'm not too sure when you were talking to Sean, mentioning to Sean. Um, didn't we have Amazon come out here and city council rejected the project many years ago?
I'm not familiar with that. I know he's a truck stop. They wanted a truck stop and then Starbucks.
City council rejected the truck stop. That was Loves Now. It's, it's the Loves Truck Stop, not the Loves, but the one right across from it, um, Abbeville Turnoff. They went out there and built, since our city council rejected them.
Right. And that's just what I've heard. I mean, I don't know for.
Well, they don't know for a fact because I was here during the city council.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
They wanted to hire me to sue them.
But it's a very, it's a very, very different council now. And so I may can't speak to that, but I just know my direction that I've gone to the councils and, and the planning commission. We've all we've all got this mantra that we want to grow.
Well, my question, yeah, I understand that. But my question was, didn't Amazon already come out here once?
I'm not aware. I can research it and find out. Yeah, no problem.
Cause I was told that, but I was not present when that occurred. I was thinking it may have even predated Sean. Sure. It went back a way.
Did Amazon come, Needles?
Recall Amazon. I mean, we would have.
I couldn't hear.
We would, is your, sorry, Sean.
Yeah, to, no, I was 2,000 behind. Prior to that, I didn't know.
Okay. On your signal was 18, so. Okay, anything else?
Okay. If there, you have anything else on the ad or?
No, that's, that's about it right now. Well, I guess I'll take this opportunity right now. Um, so we, uh, it, it's, it's important because this individual is going to be helping moving these forward. So Kathy Roush, who you've known as our, uh, projects manager. She's going to be the interim development director for the city of Needles at this point in time. And so I made a personnel change. And so with that personnel change, um, Kathy Roush has got experience in Montana where she's there. She was there for about 10 years. Uh, she's been in Lake, she was in Lake Abbeville for, for 20 years plus. She's, she's familiar with the planning process. She's familiar with engineering. And so, uh, we, uh, the last couple of days, we've worked together with all the projects. And so my goal is to get her to where she needs to be so that she can help get these projects through. You are going to have a bunch of projects coming forward that are really exciting, actually. And so I'm really looking forward to working with Kathy to get those teed up. There's parcel maps, there's track maps and bunch of good stuff. And so, you know, we're very fortunate about, um, the folks want to invest in our community. And so we're, uh, we're actively holding their hand and guiding them through the process. And so I, at this point in time, I just want to introduce Kathy Roush. She's going to be assisting our developers uh, in holding their hands and guiding them through the process.
Welcome Kathy. Good to have you.
Those is River Lux, right?
One of those is River Lux.
Only thing I can say about the cannabis business, and I was here when we all started in the original ordinance, and that's all based on compliance. And until, unless you get compliance and shut them down, don't let them get behind on anything. You're not dealing with the normal mom and pop business. They've got a lot of money. They, they have access to money. So don't let them get behind. Cause that's what the city deserves to have. So.
We should.
Okay, thank you. So anything else? We will move on to the presentation. We have a 10-minute time limit, uh, presentation to myself for Rex.
Basically the chair.
But there is more on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
The council, uh, city manager report and all that stuff. But so, uh, real quick, let's clear this out of the way and get, uh, so to get you to stand up, Madam Chair. Yeah, this is what we kind of do and we'll do it again at council, but this is an opportunity for your peers to recognize you for your, your, your service that you provided to our board. So this is a certificate of appreciation and recognition for your dedicated service. The planning commission extends its deepest gratitude for your years of leadership, commitment and dedication. Prior to planning, uh, chaired kids, served on the hospital board, Parks and Rec and the city council. So on behalf of the planning commissioner and the city, uh, uh, manager, we hereby present Linda Kidd with the certificate of appreciation to express our sincere thanks to your dedication. It's been wonderful working with you these last five years since I've been here and we appreciate everything you've done for us and you know, working with Sean and pioneering the cannabis industry and really moving all this forward. We, uh, we know you are still going to be here. And so we are going to rely on, you know, reaching out to you. That's right. And so you'll just be on that side, talking to us and giving us all your, your opinions and mindsets. And we're looking forward to that. And so we, I thank you for all your efforts and you, you're a great friend. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. So the board will come up and take a picture and we'll get out of this. This is for the board.
Yeah, good team.
Yeah, amen.
We do have a good team. Two guys are not all here. See, Mike Wright, Mike Wright is really here.
So, so, so those of you that are the, uh, so Madam Chair is resigning from the board effective, uh, the end of this meeting. And so at the end of December, well, at the end of December. And so there's a special meeting that takes place. We'll, we'll get her in here, but basically, uh, she resigned. And that's as much as I want to get into it. You want to talk to her about it? She can talk about it.
The guys don't want to get any closer.
Thank you.
I want, I want one too. All right, one, two, three. All right.
And me too. All over here.
There we go.
Do you want to say something, Madam Chair?
Well, I just, uh, I want to thank the commissioners. Um, I've always had a good board to work with. And it's not always been, um, easy topics or but I think we've done a really good job and I, I'm confident in leaving the, the board and people to work with. So I know you'll be left in good hands and like I said, I'll still be involved. I'll be, I'll be still around, probably just be sitting back there with Sean and so anyway, but I'm proud of what we've done. And, you know, I think hopefully everything stays on course and I can see that it, it will work. Thank you very much.
I do want to say thank you. I'm going to cry. We've begun, we've, um, talked a lot, quote, quote, by email and whatnot. And, um, you've given me a lot of knowledge and wisdom, taught me a lot, um, since I've been here. And being a city council, you're responsible for hiring Rick Daniels. You're responsible for a lot of things that people thought you about. And you stuck to your guns and I really appreciated that. You were incredible testimony to me. But you have fought hard to be in the scenes for a lot of things.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate that. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be emailing you anyway.
I'd like to say thank you also for dedicating so much time to the community. You're a doctor. And you guys are pretty awesome. So thanks.
Thank you very much. We, we've enjoyed Needles a lot, so. We'll still be around to enjoy it. All the, all the new things you're doing. So let's support that. All right. With that, we will continue with commissioner requests.
Barbara, we'll start with you. So we're done with the agenda items that we have at the Stanford. I wait, I'm waiting for a presentation from.
My agenda is.
My agenda and also report.
Is it? Okay. Cause it isn't listed. I mean, it's.
It's on the next page.
I looked at the next page. Managers report. That's what this goes with. And then this is part of the managers. Okay. So before I just, you know, end up, everybody says motion to adjourn. I just want to make one notation, if I could, Madam Chair, on this managers' report section right here. I'm looking forward to Stanford reporting. I mean, talk. But on this page, which there's a lot of weekend. I like these weekend reports, by the way. Can we get those? Weekly reports?
Yeah.
Weekend, weekly memorandums, they're called?
Yeah.
This is on, first on dated November 2. On the back of page three, which is the city of Needles resources, on the back of it. I'm assuming this is the flyer you hand out, city hall, and people come to the city. Okay. So on the back of it, under legal. As an attorney, I thought I'd better bring this up. Our court isn't mentioned. You mentioned Joshua Tree Superior Court. We now have our court reopened. So I think that should be on here.
Yep.
Listing the Needles Superior Court instead of Joshua Tree. Now Joshua Tree, we still do our family law out of Joshua Tree. And some things are still mandatory that they be filed in Central, San Bernardino. The four-hour, one-way drive, eight-hour total drive is really a cheery thing to do. I refuse those cases. Don't take those. So our court needs to go here in place of Joshua Tree. Okay. Cause this is our city. We're doing this for, not Joshua Tree. Okay. Now I stopped by the court before I got here today. And the John, Jonathan was at the front desk. He went to talk to Kathy, who's in our, our head clerk here. And they said that people need to contact, they wish to contact the court. They can, for, and this is going to include, it's not legal aid, but our ladies that help fill out forms, help people fill out forms is kind of a subsidiary of legal aid or of the court system that's like legal aid. I haven't had to have them help me fill out forms. Um, CEO information line, I'll give you this note. It stands, doesn't, one of my classes, I'm taking a course at home on Zoom. And the, the subject today was CEO of your business. So now I got CEO of the court. This is court executive officer. 909 is probably a Barstow number. And then Needles Court itself is 760-269-4962. Call those numbers. Now, if you call the first one, I don't know who says what to what, to whom, about what. And I didn't have time to stop and chat, but if you go to the court, you can find out exactly. But you may not need to know that, but in case somebody asks, but that should probably be corrected. And Calvary on the same page, you have churches, Calvary Chapel. And Calvary on the same page, you have churches, Calvary Chapel. Um, I don't attend that church any longer, I haven't for many years, but when I first came here, Pastor Craig was extremely. Um, serious when he told me that we don't call it Calvary Chapel, we call it Calvary Church. It's not connected with the, um, Fountain Valley, Calvary Chapel from Jack Smith. It is not one of those, and I can guarantee you it's not. So, you, you know, you can confirm that, I mean, cause I haven't been there for a lot of years, but I'm assuming it's still the same. Um, so I thought those were two very important changes that we should make, I think I may have made notes, but I'll, I think. I'll discuss them after the meeting if I need to, so if those are too important, I wanna go on.
All right, Chuck?
I have nothing.
Nothing, Will?
Uh, I don't have anything either at this time.
Oh, are these also for a direct, a direct ask?
So do you have anything else?
Um, I wanted to find out about the, I'm not, I don't know if I'm in the right part of the meeting, um, find out about the fire road. Yeah, the fire road going out from K Street, um, that they're working on, that they laid the. Um, gravel on, several layers of gravel, I, how's that coming?
Monday that the BNSF went out to bid, uh, I believe I, I did it one of my, but I've got an update to the update. And so basically, um, the, uh, BNSF went out to bid, it was overbid. Uh, they, they, it was over the amount that they were allocated and so what they're gonna do is they're gonna put a treatment down, which. You know, oil and the millings, and so they're gonna, they're gonna, um. On the, on the BNSF roadside, we're gonna go ahead and do a treatment, or we're not, they are on their road. And so they're gonna do a treatment because it would cost too much to go out to bid. Uh, it was above what their, or but, or departments were able to put together and do.
I didn't realize they were doing it, I thought we were doing it.
So that if we're talking about the same road, if you, if you come under the underpass, the BNSF. Uh, come under the, uh, underpass or the, uh, the bridge, and then you turn right and you go towards the golf course. That road when we talked about for the project.
Fire access to Jack Smith Park area.
So actually, no, it's BNSF Road and they can actually shut it down if they'd like because they own it, it's their property. And so.
By the park, the ballpark?
She's talking about the one by Jack Smith Park, clear out onto where the new projects.
Oh, River Road, the one where the project, so there's. Yeah, we're on the same page, yeah.
When we approved that, I, I was the only one who voted against it, but when we approved that, um, RV park going in across from, from. Bertie Shores Estates and Paul River Shore area. Rich told us, explained that there is another access road and that is running parallel to BNSF. He called it by a name, I don't remember, it was BNS Road.
About one that goes right up along the tracks.
Yeah, it's right next to the tracks, so it likely is railroad tracks.
That is BNSF.
Okay, so, but Rick has been telling us that we, meaning the city, have been laying several layers of gravel. Through the, since we approved that project in order to get that road, um, a good base. That eventually can function as a road for the fire trucks to get out to that RV park and. Bertie Shores Estates and Jack, Jack Smith Park, this whole thing was covered at great length.
Right, so we're talking about the same road that goes through, so here's the underpass. A street underpass and you turn right, here's that, uh, River Road. Or, excuse me, River Street, this is BNSF Road, this is actually owned by the BNSF. This is their parcel right here, so we're working with them to get a treatment on that road. So that folks, uh, cause there's dust control issues that result from the trucks moving back and forth. And so that, so we're working with, uh, one of the gentlemen at, uh, BNSF. Who's the roadmaster there, that's in charge of that area to get a treatment for that road, bless you, so that they can, um. So they can basically, uh, not have the dust occur. And so, but we actually do not own that road, there was negotiations at one point in time for a road to come. Basically over the tracks and then come through here and then exit right through there, you can see it's impromptu. But the city, uh, lost that, uh, we, yeah, we lost that opportunity there. And so if we're talking about this road, we're working closely with BNSF to put a treatment on it. At the point in time where it becomes affordable for them to actually asphalt it, they're gonna, they're gonna go ahead and do with that, but.
But they, that's supposed to be a fire access road, that was our purpose in trying to lay all that gravel down. So that, um, we can get the fire trucks in, in that back part of that whole area, back, back by Jack Smith and Bertie Shores Estates. Because I lived there, so I'm talking about the fires that occurred when I lived there, okay, they couldn't get in. The fire vehicles could not get in, so, um. Anyway, that, that access, Rick said that road right there would get us back.
It's part of the east.
So, correct.
She's talking.
Off of reclamation road, Patrick, for second access.
That's going in down here.
It's right at the entrance too.
So Bertie Shores is the project that was approved by, by the planning commission and the city council.
The RV park across the street.
Yeah, right, so what, if you look at your screen, where my, where my, um, right here with the. Where my arrow is, you can see that's the project that was approved. By the planning commission.
So that's as much as he's talking about this road here.
Yeah, so eventually someday, if they ever build out this area south of. Jack Smith Park, there will be, and a bridge was identified to be needed right here off of Park Drive, but. I understand that, but the conversation that we had during the entitlement process for that other project. Rick had mentioned that we're gonna work on two things, he talked about revitalizing River Road. Which we did reach out to our engineer and Kathy could probably talk a little bit more about it, but it was a one point four million dollar fix. For that road, so that's step one, and then step two, we're working with BNSF. Because this is their, their road, it's their, it's actually not a road, it's a parcel. That they own, this is actually one giant parcel and they allow us to have access over it, as you can recall, as you can remember for years. They actually had barriers here, so the road was closed.
Are the ballparks on BNSF property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, these are leased or they were built by volunteers and this is a little.
So, the road that Rick has been talking about being excess, access for the fire trucks, if they can't get through on River Road. Which they couldn't because everybody was trying to leave and it was dead stock, traffic, people were driving across the golf course on one of those fires, okay? Trying to get out, so to, uh, to avoid that issue. And Mike Wright was concerned about this because he's gonna vote that project down as well, what, for that reason. Until Rick spoke up and said that we can use the BNSF road for fire access to get back here. Okay, and so now, what, now what you're telling me is that the BNSF can shut it down at any time, it's their road and we don't have any. Easement rights or anything to that road.
That's my understanding, it was closed for years, but we would encourage and they're good partners with the city. And so that's why they're working with us to get a treatment on there and not shut it down. So what they are trying to do is put a treatment on there to help, uh, cause there has been a lot of complaints of dust. From a corner house there who actually has a video camera on that street. Uh, focused towards that area so that we're working with, uh, the bigger issue. And I, not that fire safety isn't a big issue, but the immediate issue is that there's a lot of dust. And we gotta make sure that this road is drivable and so we're working with BNSF to put a treatment on top of it. So those fire trucks can actually get back there, not saying they couldn't now, but if they put a treatment on it, it will mitigate the dust, it will allow.
So the fire trucks, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I already know everything you're saying, we've already discussed all that, so the fire trucks. Whatever Rick was talking about, because we never did see exactly where, there was no map like this in front of us when he was talking about it. So, the fire trucks has an access for fire to all these hundreds of people, there's eighty-eight. Homes in just Bertie Shores alone, I forgot, is there seventy-eight or eighty-some going into that RV park? There, there are plots for that, plus we have Colorado River Shores back there, we have thousands. Potentially, if they have, it's a holiday, we have things going on, people are at the river. I don't know how many people there might be at risk back there, okay? So, right now, I was under the impression that this road would be, is what Rick was talking about, that I do know. But I didn't know how far back it would go, what I thought he was talking about, all the way back to that.
It goes back to a park, you, you still gotta go east where she, what she's talking about.
This is, see all the little black cars way back there, behind the, behind the trust company.
I understand that, but, but.
All the way back to, um, where you pull in behind Bertie Shores Estates. Right there, Park Road, okay, that gets, and that's what Rick said, it would come out at Park. So we're talking about this entire stretch of property here, not just in going over that little.
He was talking about putting asphalt grindings.
On Park.
On top of Santa Fe Road, parallel with the tracks.
Otherwise, the fire department is gonna be averted back to River Road, which is gonna be dead stock. The idea is to get it all the way back behind Bertie Shores, cause this is where that new RV park is going, right behind Bertie Shores.
So as part of your, uh, planning commissioner request, I will get with BNSF and see what their plans are. To ensure that we can mitigate or maintain the, uh, safety of those folks that live in that area. I'll go ahead and follow.
That's what we thought's been going on all these months, every time I asked during a planning commission meeting.
Okay, well, I'm, like you stated, this is my first time here.
It's no excuse, you've been around.
Okay, so yeah, we'll work on that.
So, can I interject for a moment? If you, if you pan down to the Southmore along Santa Fe Road. Uh, right about there, there's that underpass from Smith Road. If, I think Rick was talking about, you know, if it was ever able, if that could somehow be turned into a proper road. With enough room for a fire truck to drive underneath the tracks, it gets them all the way, it, it would provide the second access. All the way at the back, right by the RV park, instead of having to go all the way around along Santa Fe Road from K Street.
Right, so we'll pursue grants and we'll find opportunities for its access that really, um, we've got reclamation road. We worked with, uh, BLM and VOR to give us access, but our access terminated. Uh, Bureau of Land Management.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so they, they, so our access terminates right here. And so we gotta, you know, these folks, uh, who own Mansker and, and all these.
Well, that should already be a part of that project because we had, yeah, we discussed that already, so it has to be.
I think Rick said that, that, that changing the shape of that under overpass was six million dollars. They already, he had already taken a look at the cost and, um. I don't know if that would be something that the railroad, I know they could do it, but that they would do.
So obviously, if people wanna do development there, like that individual did in the past, they will fight, we will, we will.
Work with them too, because they have to provide that for their new project, so I thought that was a part of the discussion.
To action, that required is part of the project.
Obviously, that's the shortest, most direct route.
Absolutely, no, and we've got images, if you come into the city hall sometime, uh, I'll, I'll show you the image. That they actually planned out for this area, there's, there's bays and lagoons and, and all these different things, they actually. Unfortunately, the individual passed away of a brain aneurysm before it actually came to fruition, but they were, they had big plans for this area. And unfortunately, it does need secondary access, cause right now, uh, this area doesn't even really have access without. And there were some conditions that were put onto us by the federal government, if they did allow us to use this access, they'd have to come up with a. Uh, bridge in this area, so it's in our, it's in our, obviously, we want growth and we want this to occur. So, uh, we, we actively, uh, you know, market these properties to folks that wanted to develop, so. Encourage the growth, I mean.
Is concerned about fire access.
Amen, and so I, I will.
When Rick said that, that's when Mike changed his mind about approving this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I have one question on the Lily Hill, Lily Hill substation. When is that gonna be done?
The, the booster station? Yeah, so basically. There's a couple of things that needed to be done.
The sidewalk looks really good.
Yeah, so it really is, we, we programmed that whole area and so we're, what, two, two months out?
Really? We're working on the communication between the actual pump station and the tank site and then also, that's also gonna talk. Back to L Street, so it's the, um, integration of, of all of those components, talking to each other. And then we, we need to demo the site, but before we demo and put Lily Hill on. Um, bring it up full time, we need that integration to be complete, so we're actively working on that. And hopefully we'll have that done nearby in the next couple of weeks and then we can do the demo and the paving.
Start cleaning up around it, yeah.
Is there a new site yet for the new, uh, reservoir?
And we're in the process of evaluating that.
Is it up by the other two or further out?
It's a little further out. Actually, I have a meeting this week with staff on the site. We'll be bringing back here probably in the spring, a draft, a report to share with you all.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Ken, we'll move on then to the city manager report.
So, briefly, I wanna pull up a, I want to get the, I want to pull something up real quick, but in the meantime. Uh, councillor, or excuse me, planning commissioner Beard pointed out that I'm, I'm doing weekly meetings. Or weekly memos to the council and I'll, I'll be sure to CC you on them, keeps it, keeps us up to date every week of what's going on. Uh, they're also published in the city council agendas and so, for instance, that question you had about the. The water is actually in here, it's a, there's a whole presentation, uh, from the VOR that we had. There's a whole presentation that we did with the VOR that basically, um, was able to, you know, show that we're, A, we're underutilizing our water. And then, um, it allowed us to, uh, you know, grow, provide more opportunities for, for our residents. What I'm doing right now is I'm pulling up a, a video that one of my colleagues did. At the, um, at the, uh, Stanford Institute, because we wanna know, uh, about that. So basically, with council, um, so all travel is too close. Council, so council approves my travel, you know, obviously I'm, I'm able to go to different events. Um, as part of my job, um, and so luckily with this one, uh, the Stanford Institute. You know, it's, it's actually got a pretty hefty price tag on it, um, and so luckily I was able to get a complete, uh, grant. For, for attending, um, the event, and so I was very thankful for, um, for the grant. Uh, basically, it's seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars to, to attend, so, um. Here's, uh, so, okay, I was teed up, we'll second, so I need to back up. All right, so we went to Stanford, uh, July twenty-first through the twenty-sixth, it was with, it's for the local government summer institute. About twenty professionals, twenty, twenty-five professionals were picked from the state of California throughout, there was one person from Texas, but really this is more focused. For local governments in the state of California, uh, there's a lot of regulations that we face in California that a lot of other states don't face. And so we all came together and talked about some of those issues, uh, you know, obviously with the grid, um, for instance, electric vehicles. By twenty thirty, we're all gonna be driving electric vehicles.
I won't be.
So, I know, so hear me out, so what is, you know, so the discussion was basically, okay, fine, everybody wants to be driving these electric vehicles. But how is the grid gonna support it? So we've got all these, these, and, and this is, uh, regardless of what party you are, and these are the conversations that are taking place. And so it was nice to really just show off or, uh, uh, really, you know, talk about needle, everybody. Everybody knows about needles now at the end of this session, whether they like it or not, actually, it's kind of, we, we did a good job. Uh, but talking about our community, but, you know, obviously, but it was interesting that we found that. Whether you're a big city or a small city, we're actually, we're facing the same kind of issues, you know, we all need housing, especially in the state of California. Um, but, you know, the, the needles problem, if you really wanna talk about affordability and housing. So if you go to places like Mountain View where Google's located, this is where it was, or even Palo Alto. So the price of land is very high, okay, so you're, you're looking, it's, it's a very high square footage cost. In needles, it's, it's a low square footage cost. But you've got that price of develop, the cost of development, which is the same in both areas. So it's hard to create and develop housing in both affluent areas, it has a median household of two hundred and sixty thousand. And a, uh, an area that has a median household income of fifty-two thousand, like the city of Needles. So we actually face a lot of the same problems, and so here's just a brief, uh, little skit or little presentation that one of my colleagues put together. Took place at Stanford. That's graduation day, was it the end of the meet? So it's us at Microsoft, we, yeah, so we made it to Microsoft, uh, we, we got to go to the actual, one of the Microsoft satellite campuses and go meet with Microsoft. And so basically, at the end of the day, if you, I gave you the, the outline of the classes and the courses. It's basically leadership oriented with various modules that focus on sustainability and community and design and ethics. And so we had a, a problem that we all had to solve, the different groups that we broke up to. My problem was housing, because I focused, that's why, we're talking about the housing issue, but whether you're in Mountain View or, or City of Needles. It's actually quite challenging both to provide affordable housing to folks. Because, you know, you got to have a certain income to be, you know, when you're helping, you have, you have to be at a certain income in some of these communities. And even the workers, you know, the city workers aren't able to live in the communities that they work in, because of the outrageous prices that they're, they're finding for. Um, you know, that are being sold in their community, so, uh, yeah, no, it was a great opportunity. I, I, I think, um, the city manager, California City Manager Foundation for providing me with the grant to attend in the city of Needles. For providing me with my travel costs, but it was a, a great opportunity to be around with a, a bunch of different leaders. So police chiefs, the city managers, to, um, deputy city managers, the county administrators. So it was, it was a good opportunity to learn about where is California going and, and what's working and what's not working? And how do we work together to make our communities better? Ready for any questions you can ask?
Do you have anything else for your report, Patrick?
Um, and then, and then briefly today, we had a groundbreaking over at, uh, First Beach for the Bob Bell Beach Park. That was a great opportunity that Caltrans gave us for sustainability's grant. So I was really excited to, to get out there and, uh, look at, uh, you know, it's going to be a beach on the Colorado River. And there's few of those, and so Needles is going to have one of their own. Earlier last month, we just did a, another groundbreaking, uh, we actually did multiple groundbreakings. We did one at Duke Watkins Park where we're doing the, uh, park improvement there. And then we did the walking trail over at the, uh, Jack Smith Park. This will be part of my weekly update that I'm going to provide to the council, but I wanted to give you guys a headshot, uh, you know, uh, Ed. And in, uh, we've got a, uh, this weekend at, uh, the rec center, we've got, uh, Santa's workshop that we provide for, for children in our community. Uh, uh, there's also, uh, at Palo Verde, there's a career fair, if you're in the health industry, to, to go get a, a job in our community. And so, uh, there's various events that are always taking place and we're always striving. There was a food, uh, bank that we, uh, gave out, um, food to a hundred and some families, basically watermelons and fresh fruits and vegetables and tomatoes. That were given out, so it was really neat to, to, that, provide that opportunity to our residents access to good, healthy food. So, well, no, it was done through, uh, make Bullhead better, uh, a lady named by Grace Hetch. Who's actually a city council member out in Bullhead, she's taking, she works directly with Tri-State. Um, Tri-State Health and the IEHP Island Empire Health Plan, which is the group, um, that those two got together and, uh, put this. Um, you know, pop, I call it a pop food giveaway, because it was the day before, uh, everybody was notified, so, um, you know. They're going to do more of those, and so we're going to get together this weekend with the, the president of IEHP and, uh, Grace Hetch. To see how we can provide healthy food to our residents, uh, you know, obviously they want to bring trucks of food out, which is great. Uh, but, you know, we got, we got to be methodical. And, and we can't be doing it every day, because there shouldn't be a lot of food that just goes to waste. So we, if we are going to do something, we need to do it right, and it was nice to see, there's a couple railroaders that had their day off, that they came over and wanted to just help.
They probably come over to get the food.
Yeah, well, that too, but they had. Absolutely, everybody, so I'm CC.
And I think it's a coordination, if I could add, like, because you get food from California and food from Arizona.
Why keep getting heads dropped at only the very, very low income needy? And I can't.
No.
No, everybody, all of our countries have, you're able, they don't card, they don't, no, you're, if you want to go into state, let's say, if you want to go into.
They make you sign a name, sign in, identify yourself, which I don't think is.
So with this one, it was just first.
This was different though.
Might be that way at St. Vincent's, but this one is.
And fire.
They asked you to sign your name, and that was it, because I would know they got some stuff, they had so much.
And also, um, if you've got a phone, we've got a new app called the Needles Connect app.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, government's in my phone, no thanks.
Okay, so we, we, we put out events, uh, events that are issues with, uh, the electric system, with the powers down. We, we put out any emergencies that are taking place in the community, so if you have a chance, download the Needles Connect app to stay connected with the community.
So when this, so when this food bank comes to town, through Grace, or whomever.
Tri-State Health.
And so Tri-State, I go to Tri-State for my medical.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and they had a food bank not that long ago, you told me about that.
Yeah.
That was what we're talking about?
Talking about, yeah.
Okay, so how do we get notified if we don't want it, the government app in our phone?
Well, it was just a flyer that I saw on Facebook, but I don't know if they hang flyers around, or it seemed like it was the last minute.
They want to do is have better coordination.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
And so I'm working with their team to do that, because they wanted to bring a truck out today, and I, 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 I said, look, we need to be.
No room in Barbers Bridge.
No, yeah, but we need to be strategic on, on how we do this.
Because not everybody gets Facebook either.
So how can we get truckloads and warehouses that it bashes in some refrigerator coolers or something that?
So if private industry wants to come in and do that, we can, uh, you know, it basically, we want to leave it up to or, is private organizations to take on that, I mean.
But I'm just saying, if they got that.
There are opportunities there.
Maybe we could stockpile some of it.
Yeah, there's, there's opportunities for that, but again, you want the private sector to step in, we're trying to get our roads done, we're trying to public safety, so the city's got.
Maybe you want to start a grocery store.
There you go.
There you go.
All right, well, with that, I would like a motion to adjourn, and I'd, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
All right, Merry Christmas, everybody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
Are we allowed to say that?
Yes, we are.
Round here.